Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I call to order this informational meeting of October 6, 2020. I do want to note for the record, we have Councilors Kylie, Jensen, and I believe Counselor Brecky may have just joined. All that are in on teleconference. First item up today is committee and commission reports. We have an audit committee report from last week. Counselor Kylie is Chair of the Audit Committee. Would you be prepared to make that report?
I am prepared. Thank you very much. The Audit Committee met last Monday to address four items: an audit report, an audit follow-up, the 2020 Audit Plan, and department update. The audit covered employee payroll deductions, and the Audit Plan recommends changes based on impacts from COVID-19. The internal audit manager will present these at a forthcoming informational meeting, so I won't go into detail on either one at this point in time. And the follow-up audit revisited recommendations previously noted in Audit Report 18-03, Purchasing Card Program. Of the three recommendations made in that Audit Report, two have been implemented. The third will be implemented once new software is fielded this year to address training and tracking. And lastly, Shawna spoke about the internal audit hiring process. And in fact, the first round is scheduled to take place tomorrow. I believe they had 28 applications submitted, which is a really good result. She also noted that many changes have been made to the internal audit webpage. It's actually now much easier to find. You can find it under Departments and Services. And once you get in there, at the bottom, there are links to the 2020 Audit Plan, issued Audit Reports. You can submit audit ideas, list the Audit Committee, and then it also has archived Audit Reports, as well as past and upcoming meetings. In fact, the two reports that I addressed earlier, if you wish, you can go to the website and read the full report in detail there. And as mentioned, the steps are being taken to prepare for the proposed 2021 Audit Plan. And then finally, the financial risk assessment of the Public Parking Fund. That process has begun. Subcommittee members have been selected, and they consist of Citizens Rose Grant and Dean Bucknerberg, who are both citizen representatives on the Audit Committee. And then Counselor Kurt Sale and Counselor Alex Jensen are on that Subcommittee. And once the Subcommittee will reach formal recommendations of an auditor to conduct the risk assessment, once that's been done, it'll be presented to the full Audit Committee for its final approval. And then once the contract is agreed upon and issued, the process, well, the City Council will have to approve that particular contract, so that contract will come before the full council. And once a firm has been selected, that selected firm will complete the risk assessment. They will then present their findings to the Audit Committee. And then lastly, they will present their findings to the full City Council. So overall, it was a very productive meeting, and we expect to meet again very soon for the purpose that I just stated. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Kylie. Very good report. Next up is City Council Open Discussion. Any open discussion?
Councilmember Chair?
Yes, Counselor Brecky.
I do just have one item that I'd briefly like to report to you. I have been working with Jim David and our staff to prepare an ordinance revision to the Ethics Ordinance. And this is a very minor one, but I did do some research in light of all the activity that's been going on in that area. And I know that there's going to be more substantive issues coming forward, but this was a fairly minor thing that seemed important. And so I have a draft prepared. I'm going to give you a full explanation of it at the next informational meeting. But as soon as, Stacy's office is taking a look at just this rough draft, I will get it out to you so you can take a look at it. All it does is require an education component to our Ethics Ordinance, requiring that employees, councilmembers, those people that are subject to the Ethics Ordinance have routine training. And I think what we did is tied it to the election process, so when new people come in to the system, there's just a regular kind of reviewing of that. So I will be sharing that with you in advance of the meeting next Tuesday, but I just wanted to mention it at today's meeting, so that you know what it is when I send it out to you.
Okay. Other open discussion from the phone. Hearing none, we'll move on to presentations. We have one presentation today. It's a big one. South Veterans Parkway Update. It's going to be presented by Mark Cotter, our Director of Public Works. I also want to recognize that we have Shannon Austin, a Principal Engineer in the audience, who I know has been integral on this project for a long time, it sounds like. So, welcome, Director.
Yes, thank you for having us, and thank you for introducing Shannon as well. She has been key to this project and will be as we take the next step. So I want to thank her personally for all the work she's done to get us to this point. All right, let's get started. We've got essentially three slides for you today, and just want to give you a perspective on this corridor. This is a 17-mile corridor. It's generally a mirror image of I-229. And the planning stages for this corridor started in the very early 90s with doing an environmental assessment and finding the appropriate alignment and going through all the necessary steps that you do when you go through an extensive environmental assessment. After that initial environmental assessment was accepted in 2003, the state and the city signed a contract in 2005, and that essentially started the construction of, from the yellow area, 57th Street to Madison Street, and then even today, the final elements of getting connected and operational to I-90, which is anticipated to be by the end of this year. And so essentially, half the corridor has been constructed. And last year, about May of 2019, is when Secretary Berquist with the Department of Transportation called and said, you know, now that we've essentially completed all the contract work, we knew we still had about a year and a half to go with the construction. He's like, let's start to work together in completing the southern section. This has been a corridor that's been longtime coming. It's been in the planning stages for nearly 30 years, and asked us if we would be able to start to work together and ultimately work with them on coming up with a proposal on how we'd approach the southern section. So that's one of those calls that you'll never forget that you got. And so that's certainly one that we went to work on. Shannon was one of our first calls to actually pull in and say, all right, we've got the environmental assessment. We've got the alignment. As this land has matured, we've worked with developers on setting aside the land for the corridor. And ultimately, when opportune acquisitions were available, the DOT did make those purchases. And so there's a number of parcels along the corridor that have been purchased as that land was contemplated for development. And so we've got a couple of more slides for you here, and then we'll be able to get into some of the elements of the agreement. So when we focus on the southern section, we've generally broke it into what we call Segment A, B, C, and D. They can go into a sequential order that we would initially envision that would be that area of Western Avenue to Cliff Avenue. But we're going to be working on right-of-way design and right-of-way procurement for the entire corridor. So essentially, the first one that's ready, we would go to the market on. And so if you start to look at that corridor as it traverses across that area, the southern section of Sioux Falls, you'll see that there's streetlights. So it'll be a six-lane facility with a bike lane on one side. If you look closely between some of those areas, like between Tall Grass and Louise, there's a pedestrian sign there. That'll actually be a pedestrian underpass. And there's five of them planned on this southern section of Veterans Parkway. There's signalized intersections along the corridor. This is generally all mile access points. And then as you go on the north-south section, if we can go back there, that's generally half-mile connections as you go more through that commercial corridor. We've worked with the same consultant that was used to go to I-90 to come up with the anticipated cost for design, right-of-way acquisition, going through the environmental steps, and then ultimately the construction. And the city's portion of the construction would be where the intersecting streets connect to the corridor. So the DOT will fund the design, right-of-way procurement, and the corridor itself. And then as we, the city, connect our arterial streets to the corridor, that will be our portion of the construction. So what we thoughtfully did for a period of months after Secretary Berquist called is we really tried to anticipate, okay, what are the costs of building this? From the soft costs and the hard costs? And then ultimately, we took the $2019, indexed them forward based on a 3% inflation to 2023, because that would be when we anticipate the first construction project to happen. And that's where the $208.9 million construction value comes from. The DOT's portion of that in 2023 is $176 million. The city's portion of that would be $32.9 million. And we would fund that portion out of our annual CIP through the arterial street program. You know, outside of what you've probably heard and talked about, this is certainly a transformational project. It's been in the planning stages for nearly 30 years. Land near the mature parts of the city have generally been planned for, set aside. Some of those parcels have been purchased, and we're just excited to take this to the next step, not just for Sioux Falls, but really the entire region, so we can have that backbone of transportation in position for, again, not only Sioux Falls, but T-Harrisburg, Northwest Iowa, all those daily commuters that come into town. We want them to have safe and efficient travel, and this will provide for that. So if you have any questions, we can do our best to answer them.
Great, thank you. Questions? Counselor Erickson?
This may be a silly question, but for the screen, the slide that we have on the screen, are all of the city's project responsibility, are all of those within the city limits? Or, I mean, because we're really far south, so are some of those improvements that we're paying for in the county? Or is there a plan to annex those? Or is it just something we're doing because this project is massive and it's a requirement to get it done?
Well, the foundation of those areas are all in our 2040 Growth Plan. So our 2040 Growth Plan today goes down to the T Road. And so that'll ultimately be the next sanitary sewer basin that gets opened. Today, some of those improvements are not annexed into the city, but that area continues to mature, and you know, you guys are effectuating annexations every day. But all the improvements that the city would invest in are ultimately in our 2040 Growth area, if they're not to date in the city limits.
So would the county, is it just the city, or will the county be responsible for any of that, too, or no?
I wouldn't anticipate that, just with it being in our growth area.
Right, and that makes sense. And that's truly one of the fastest-growing, I mean, it is growing like gangbusters. It's just crazy how fast, as fast as you can get the connectivity with sewer, houses and commercial and businesses are going in at a really fast rate. And we see the Harrisburg School District even continue to just grow a lot, too. So, I mean, I understand it. I just was kind of curious how that plays out.
No, that's very good.
Okay, I'll stand by for now.
Other questions on the phone?
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Counselor Kylie.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Director Cotter and especially Shannon for their work on this corridor. It's been a long time coming. And many people, as I've stated before, many people said it would never come to fruition. And it's good to see that. Especially like to thank Secretary Berquist for his role and the role that the state has played, because this is a very heavy lift. And obviously, it's not something we could do without the assistance of the state of South Dakota. And Secretary Berquist has recently announced that he's going to be retiring from his position. So I just wanted to thank him again. And he's going to leave some pretty big shoes to fill here in the coming years. Director Cotter, I had contacted you not long after this announcement was made, because it's been inquired of me, what about buffers and brooms in residential areas? I do know that we do have buffers and brooms in certain places that exist already, especially between 57th Street and Arrowhead Parkway. So could you just address that process and what will be done in the future to help make that determination?
Certainly, and I may pull up Shannon Austin if she's available for that. Shannon, do you want to speak to that, just in general terms?
Good evening, Counselor Shannon Austin with the Public Works Office. Great question, Commissioner Kylie. Through the environmental process, we will go ahead and review the noise impacts along this entire corridor. And very similar to the section, as you stated, from 57th Street going to the north, those areas that currently have residential development adjacent to it, we will look at those noise contours. And if the environmental process, basically, if those homes get into those noise contours, then Birmingham certainly would be an option for us to construct along the corridor. But we won't know that until we get through that environmental document.
Right, and part of that environmental document would be, I mean, something that would have an impact would be water. I mean, obviously, you wouldn't want to build anything that's going to obstruct water and then hold it back and create bigger issues. Is that correct?
Yep, that is correct. And certainly, wetlands are also part of the environmental process. You know, there's wetlands, there's species. You know, in this particular section, we don't have the lion snake, which I'm sure a lot of you have heard about. We don't have the lion snake in this area, but we do have wetlands. We do have socioeconomic, you know, areas that we do have to take a closer look at. So as a reminder, the environmental document has been approved for the entire corridor. This is just a refresher. But with the time that has passed, we do have to update and make sure that that environmental document does adhere to the current federal requirements.
Thank you very much, Shannon. Again, thank you for all the work you've put into this project. My last question is, going back north again, it doesn't involve this new section, south of 57th Street over to I-29. But there's an area between Arrowhead Parkway and just south of East Madison that is still basically, I believe, single lanes of travel north and south. What is planned for the future with expanding that as it is in the other areas to the north and south?
Another great question. The portion, when the city of Sioux Falls entered into the agreement with the Department of Transportation, Powderhouse Road, as it was previously called, was the responsibility of the city of Sioux Falls. And so we have built half of it, and we have plans done to complete the other half. And just, we're working through the property owner negotiations to get that second, or the northbound lanes done. We do have plans to complete the portion from Madison Street down through Sixth Street as early as next year. And then we wanted to rebuild the intersection of Arrowhead Parkway and Veterans Parkway in 2023, when we came through and widened Arrowhead Parkway. So certainly projects to come. We would have liked to have had all that work done now, but certainly with funding and timing, it's certainly coming in the next five years.
Very good, thank you. And that's good to hear that it's going to happen in the near future, because I'm assuming, as you are, that once the bridges over the Sioux River are completed, or I'm not sure if it's the Sioux River, but over the river there, just south of I-90, we're going to see quite an increase of traffic on that corridor there currently. So it'll be good to have that stretch completed.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that, you know, with those additional lanes that currently are there on Veterans Parkway, there's three lanes there. Those can carry up to about 12,000 to 15,000. So as soon as we open up the connection up at I-90, you know, we can grow up to that 12,000 to 15,000. We already are seeing between Arrowhead Parkway and 26th Street around 10,000 to 12,000. So, you know, there's certainly, there's plenty of room to grow.
There is, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Chair Nitzer?
Yes.
Alex Jensen here.
Yep, please, go.
My question is, along Veterans Parkway, there on the east side of Veterans Parkway, there is a, what I call kind of a bike trail-ish type trail system. Will that be kind of followed all along this entire project to kind of open up more bike trail, more trail space in Sioux Falls?
Yep, that's another great question, absolutely. As Director Cotter had mentioned, there are pedestrian crossing signs that are on that southern segment. There is a bike trail, a recreational trail along the entire south side of Veterans Parkway. And then a great feature is that it will actually connect into the newly opened Minnesota Avenue Trail that goes all the way down to Harrisburg. If you haven't seen that recently, drive out there. It's a great, great addition to connect, again, Harrisburg to Sioux Falls. Again, a regional benefit to the entire area. But yes, there will be a bike trail on the entire segment.
Thank you.
Any other questions in the room or on the phone? And we will take public input in just a few minutes. Seeing none, I'm going to just ask a couple of questions. So as far as the staging of which ones you do, is that really going to come down to just right-of-way acquisition? Whichever one you get all the right-of-way for, or?
At this point, yes. That's one of the key things. We need to secure all the right-of-way eneasements and then ultimately certify it and take it forward.
And then, a lot of, I think sewerability ends around here somewhere in a large part of the south area. Basin 15, which is out in my west side, is, I think, constructing next year, I want to say. But is this one, is a basin for this in the plan yet, or are we going to have to move something up, or?
It's in a future plan. So if you're off the sheet a little bit further to the east, that'll be where a future lift station site will be. And then as you fall along kind of that T Road, just above that, there's a ravine. That's generally where the trunk sewer will go. All that area essentially from the corridor will fall by gravity down to that trunk sewer, ultimately over to that lift station and up. And so we're going to be in, over the course of the next year, we're going to be citing that future pump station so we can work with landowners today, years in advance. But essentially, we won't see much for development south that corridor until that gets cited, because we've got other areas today that are still sewerable. We want to make sure that land gets matured, be it on the east side, west side, or northwest side.
Yep, absolutely. And then, as far as, so Shannon did talk about the environmental assessments. Is that going to happen individually for each phase? Or are you just going to be doing an EA for the whole project? Or how does, I mean, does that start today? How does that look? And what's the timeline?
I think ultimately, we're going to, you know, secure the design firm. We'll start to get granular in that level. But essentially, we need to look at the entire corridor from that standpoint. And then ultimately, as we get through those various stages, then really focus on the right-of-way. So I would say, you know, that's probably more to come. We could certainly come back to you right after the first of the year. It's going to take us some time to get the designer under contract, things of that nature, and give you a better layout of some of that granular type of work.
And if you have to do environmental assessments, if I remember right, that's going to trigger, there's going to have to be open houses and public input that would be required, that would be taken as part of the EA, because they will take input from the, so there would be heavy involvement of the public throughout this process?
That's right. Do you want to speak to that? Sure.
Yeah, we welcome the opportunity to get out as much as we can with this corridor. You know, with COVID and masks, it'll be interesting. You know, we have a new avenue of public involvement. We have virtual meetings. We have Facebook meetings. So we'll see what happens in the future, but we absolutely will have many public meetings to talk about, you know, this project. It's been talked about for a long, long time, so we still have availability for public input.
Okay, very good. And then, do we know what the, my last question is, as far as appropriation, is this something that we have to, that the state legislature would have to continue to appropriate year after year? And that we could potentially be, have to time it based on that? If, let's say, finances change and things could get delayed, or how does that look?
They'll tie it to federal funding. But essentially, you know, we'll be working closely with them on the funding. And then, just like our portion as well, each year, our portion would come out of the arterial street fund as well. And so there's always takeaway language in the agreements that, you know, since this is funded with federal funds, they've got to be there for them to make their commitment. And then just, so I don't leave without saying it, our intention is to bring this in front of you next Tuesday as a resolution with the agreement. So tonight's the informational, and then next weekend will actually be when the resolution with the contract attached to it will be available. So we'll see it two different weeks in a row.
Is that engaging the design firm? Is that what we're being, going to be asked?
No, that's the actual agreement. So the agreement that the state of South Dakota Transportation Commission approved on September 22nd, that would be us bringing that same agreement to you next week, next Tuesday, at the 7 o'clock meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Matt, thank you.
Having no other questions of the council, great presentation. We're going to move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone interested in giving us input on what we've discussed here today for up to five minutes. If you could just state your name, we'd welcome any input. Please come forward. Yep, come on up. Just come up to the podium, to the mics if you could, and if you could just restate your name, that would be wonderful.
I'm Polly Boggs, and I live near where the cliff to western segment there. And there's supposed to be an overpass that's very near me. And I'm concerned, I mean, it's like really near where I live. So like within a block and a half of where I live. And so I'm concerned about the overpass that's going to be there and what it's going to look like. And beyond, how do you get on Minnesota? So I live there, Minnesota and 85th down there, so.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I should clarify as well that that's the exact same thing that you would want to bring to, and when there's open houses and they take input and environmental assessments, there'll be things advertised for that, and they'll welcome public input. And it's that very thing I think they'd want to hear when they're talking about the design. And this is great to have here, but I just want to make sure that we, that you know that as the process goes along, it would be great that you go to those open houses and state your concerns. Yeah, it sounds like it's going to be in the paper, and I would assume there might be some other...
Direct mail out.
Direct mail, also, would it be to like a perimeter of people around the project? Okay, yep, so you'll get a mailer as well?
Okay, good.
Awesome, thank you. Thanks for the input. Others, please come forward.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Thanks for your service. And Mark and Shannon, thanks for your work, too. Appreciate it. So I have a home in between the cliff and Minnesota section there on 77th Street. And just hang with me, I've got a few questions here. But you mentioned six-lane facility. Mark, is that three full lanes go in each direction? You mentioned a bike lane as well. I'm just wondering what that looks like. Okay, so we got three full lanes go in each directions. Is the highway built up? Is that highway going to be, how high is that highway going to be built up in relation to our homes? to our homes?
I think, you know, we'll have to look at the specific situation. I wouldn't know just exactly where you live without looking at the corridor. And I think those are, I mean, we're more than wanting to do more like a one-on-one meeting, to get re-engaged with the design.
Okay. And then you mentioned 2023. Is that the first construction that'll start in 2023?
That's correct.
So, it's not ending in 2023. It's actually, that's when it'll begin.
There'll be four projects, 2023, 2024, 2025. We intend to do four projects in one year.
And you don't know when, which section is going to start?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, Shannon, you mentioned environmental studies. When will those be done, so we know if there are going to be berms and trees and structures like that for our homes?
Who does we get in the contract with the designer, which we probably don't have?
Okay. And then are there maps, last one. Are there maps available that show the distance right now from the farther, you know, the lane that would be closest to our homes? Can we actually look at a map and say, you know, this is going to be, you know, 30 yards from the backyard of my house?
There's, there's, use our GIS website on Sioux Falls.org, the arterial corridor is on there, to get your vision from your backlot line to the corridor.
Okay. And say that again, G.I.?
SiouxFalls.org.
SiouxFalls.org. Okay, got it. And we didn't get your name. Could we just get your name for the record? Keith Moore. Keith, Keith Moore.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
And then last one, I do have one more. Is there a, is there a knowledge or a history of loss of value for homes when something like a six-lane highway basically goes through your backyard? Do we know if there will be loss of value to our homes? And is that something that you would know just from history?
So-
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate it. I, I just, I'd be, welcome more input. I just want to make sure that we, we are clear that this is really a, a one-way conversation. But before we continue, maybe, could one of you tell us what the best way for them, all of them to engage? Because they're all going to have a lot of questions as this goes forward. Could one of you maybe step forward and tell us what, because I think what, what they're really going to be looking for is, how do they get their input to the right people at the right time? And we're happy to hear the input, but I just don't want to make sure that we don't end up into a, a de facto open house over the, you know.
A hundred percent. And so, you know, just since this is new, as we've just brought this forward, in the, in the coming months, we'll be setting up a webpage right on the SiouxFalls.org. And there'll be a good landing page for people to sign up for updates, but also for them to, to get more, you know, detailed information that was just asked. So, we're just at the very beginning stages. Again, there's, the overall environmental assessment was done and signed back in 2003. And then ultimately, you know, we'll be, we'll be looking at more of these sections in, in detail. So, but just give us a little bit of time, so we can get some of that backbone webpage information set up, once we get our designer under contract. And then we can, I think, be better equipped to address very specific property questions.
And then, and that would include contact, a way to contact, because there's going to be very specific. I have a property here, and this is what I'm concerned about, where somebody could get back to them.
That's correct.
When we get to there. Okay. All right. So, I just want to make sure that, that's clear, that that will be coming. And that's not to dissuade input. I just want to make sure that, I don't think we have all the answers to do a Q and A at this point, so.
Sure. I would like to at least get people's contact information while they're here. So, I'm going to set, I'm going to put a piece of paper over. So, as you leave, make sure you at least write down your, your name and your address, maybe your best contact, so we can start to build that. Okay?
Great. Appreciate it.
Yep, take care.
Please. And please, nobody take that to be that I'm trying to dissuade you to come up and give us your concerns. I just-
Wayne and Mary Wilhelm.
Appreciate it.
I'm going to aggravate you for a little bit.
It's fine.
I live in a HOA that's north of 85th Street and east of Minnesota.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm on the 83rd Place, and there's a cul-de-sac there. And there's apartments right over here. I'm concerned that there's not enough room for a six-lane highway and a bike path through there. So, yeah, because you got ditches and everything. Is, is it possible for, to have somebody come out to the HOA and explain how this is going to work? Because to the east of us, there's wetlands too. So, I don't know how you're going to get, and it's south of your place, and, and we're kind of east of the big housing, and there's a big berm in there. And I'm concerned there, if, is there enough room for a six-lane to go through there? So, if, if there could be somebody that could come out and explain it to the HOA, how that's going to work? And is that, that's future again?
Yeah. In the future, we, yes, absolutely.
Because Sioux Falls is growing south, Harrisburg growing north. And this was devised 25 years ago. And I'm thinking, wouldn't it be wise to revise and go farther south, so you don't have to build berms and bridges, and you can just go along through, I, I realize you're going to have to buy land back, or sell it back, or something, and redo everything. But I think that's, 25 years ago isn't applying to today. I think, is it possible to have that revised? I realize that's your 30 years of work, so.
Well, no. So, that's a, that's a great question. The last couple of weeks that people have called, and I'm sure you guys also have the concern on, why not move it to 106? Well, we wouldn't move it to 106, because that's outside of the city of Sioux Falls' growth area, and people wouldn't use it. When, when we originally started looking at this corridor, we had it go straight down Highway 11 and over on Highway 106, over to the T interchange. And our traffic models, because they were outside of the growth area, nobody was using it. So, we wanted to use it as a regional arterial corridor for the city of Sioux Falls, as well as for the surrounding communities. So, that's, that's why the corridor is in our growth area. And yes, certain areas, there are houses that are backing up against it now, just like there are houses that are backing up against it on the north-south road. So, certainly a great, great comment. And that's something that, through the public involvement process, we'll want to make sure that everyone understands why that alignment is, is where it's at. It's because it's going to serve people on both sides of the corridor. And, you know, again, we don't have the answers on specifics to the, to the homes today, but we're going to get there. And there's going to be ample opportunity for public input.
And then, that's because the environmental assessment hasn't started. We haven't even taken, brought an engineer on. And so, through the environmental assessment, they would have to look at, you would have to answer the question, how do you mitigate, mitigate wetlands? How do you deal with drainage?
Exactly.
How do you deal with noise impacts to somebody's home and all of that? And that's why it's important, if they get the letter and they see other public notice, that they go to those meetings, and that's where it's going to be.
Absolutely. Because the environmental document was already approved once, as, as Director Cotter had said. The entire corridor was approved in, in the, around 2010. So, we are refreshing it, but there's new hand, landowners that we will definitely want to bring into the process now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Others? Welcome any input. Please come forward.
I'm Mary Wilhelm. I agree with my husband. A 25-year-old plan is not made for this type of development down in the south end of the city. There is a whole bunch of discussion when the new Walmart was going to be built on 57th, and the people had a fit, so they moved it to Minnesota and 85th. We've been happy to have it down there, but how are you going to cross Minnesota Avenue with this road? How are you going to cross Cliff Avenue? There's three big complexes there. You're going to go right in between them with six lanes of traffic? And I don't know if this is meant to be similar to the 229 loop. It's far from it. 229 loop has no stop signs, no stoplights. How many are we going to have on this loop? It's not speeding up any traffic to help get the traffic flow through at all. None whatsoever. And I, I don't know. I, I guess I, that's my big complaint, other than, when I look at where Lloyd put up the apartments next to us by our cul-de-sac, there's no room for six lanes of traffic. You have to have a median someplace in between there, right? You have to have a ditch on either side, and we still have to have some of our property, and so does Lloyd on the back of his garages. I don't think it's been looked at very well.
Thank you.
I live off, I live through their, they live in my backyard.
Can, can, can we get your name and then?
My name is Linda Urmuck.
Thank you.
I live at 305 East 82nd Place. When they came in to build the apartments, the Edgewater Apartments that Lloyd put up out there, and they were going to build, finally, our Prairie's Edge was going to build a walkpath around our water pond, which is now dry because of the weather. All of a sudden, the trees that were supposed to be on the right-hand side had to be moved to the left-hand side, right on the edge of the water, because the property lines were off. All of a sudden, what we thought was our property wasn't our property. So, I think the measurements out in that area are completely off, because we lost like six feet at least of land that we thought we belonged to us. When it rains, we do not have street sewers. The water runs down our streets into the first retaining pond, drains into the second retaining pond. Several times, those have both overflowed and gone down into Grand Prairie, to the point where we possibly have lawsuits because of our runoff drowning out their backyards. Now, you want to come and build six lanes? There visibly, for me to look out there, isn't room for four, let alone six and a bike path. And that does not include a berm or a median. So, I think they really need to go out in that area and take a tech measure, and see how much land they really have available, because I don't think it's there. Unless they're going to tear out some garages or homes. Because our floor plan for our HOA changed completely, because all of a sudden, we didn't have enough room. So, I would just say, take some measurements. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, come forward, sir.
My name is Vladimir Urmuck. I would like to, to give more information what my wife was trying to tell you. Yes, we do live in the Prairie Edge Town Home, between Prairie's Edge Apartment, that is on Minnesota and 85th Street, yeah, and Edgewater Apartments, that is exactly on 85th Street. And we are between. And lots of tenants, they like to come in our area, on the, I'm, most of them are children, who is trying to play, because it's pretty calm and safety area. They're running, they're on the bicycle. Many tenants also like to come, eh, work with dogs. That is how they like our area, that's exactly dogs and tenants walk around our area. My suggestions, it's really, like my wife told me, need to exactly measure that area for, to build a road, to make a dog's park. That is exactly how many people like to walk with dogs on the cliff and 85th Street. We have a pet spa also. How many people come with dogs to make a dog's park? We have only two, as I remember on the cliff and I-29, and John Morrell, near the John Morrell. It's good area for dog's park. I will be appreciated. And another, that is one question. If you remember, I can repeat. And another, we sent, I sent, and my wife sent, eh, suggestion about bike trail. Bike trail was sent to Mayor and August Leader. That is our area. My suggestion was to make a, a bike trail from, on Minnesota Avenue, from Harrisburg, 85th to 69, turn on 69 on the east cliff and back to Harrisburg. That is a huge loop wide. Not many people use this sidewalk, but sidewalk is just nearest, like this side. Nobody. But huge area between street and sidewalk. And that looks like a green spaces. That grass always is dead, or no grass. To make a wider, what we have been, traveled many times in the, many other countries, and even Colombia, like example, they have a, a wide sidewalk and exactly a big side of the, for bicycle. What, how you made it from 85th Street to Harrisburg? Nice, nice. What, recently I explored that bike trail looking nice. To make this line to the, what, from 85th to 69, eh, it will be great for people who live in this area. Probably, that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Others that would like to give input today? Not seeing any. It looks like we passed a sign in, a signup sheet around, so we've got some information. Make sure to catch them if, if you have any other questions. And-
I just want to, the informational meeting, I'm, it's a, going informational meeting for the, for the places downtown.
Yeah, and just-
The council, we, we, we have it, that's what I'm asking.
And it, so it was just stated that there will be informational meetings. There'll be letters that will go out, and people will be notified, and they can attend them. And there, I would assume there's probably going to be a virtual component. Hasn't been figured out yet, but, okay, very good. Well, it's an exciting project, but there's obviously a, a lot of concerns, and we'll make sure that your input is heard. Okay. I believe that's all we have for today, so I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.